On that to to allow for deed restricted units. Number unknown, probably between fifty and seventy-five. Units and that's fourteen to twenty-one units per acre and they were pretty interesting. They were sort of storage container style units. Like stacked on top of each other. And so it would be like a mini single family almost like just right next to each other. So small yard, very small yards, but showed like a small fenced spot maybe for a dog or kids. And A one car garage in that lower you storage space. And it was interesting, modern looking. So that would it looked interesting for sure. There we had some concerns with just the reg path realignment landscape buffer between the highway and the residential, you know, we have hundred and fifty foot buffer further south. And then let's see, they also didn't show a whole lot of park available parking on site and no sidewalks and things like that and a wide road. So they, you know, it was just work session. There's some other issues like an out of town water agreement because they'd be looking for the town to provide water. So we've had some comments like that that we delivered to them as well. So.
Are they going to put facades on those containers or?
Yeah, I mean, they it's it's hard to say right now. It's it was a work session sketch. So it was kind of a sketch plan. But they they looked modern. They had some finished area, some maybe unfinished day, more unfinished looking area.
Where is our? That agreement originally was different than our normal water agreements because
Because of the school.
Do with the high school.
Yes.
So what is our obligation to give anybody out their water at all?
They do, but part of that water agreement is for X number of years, like twenty-five years or something. I'm don't hold me to that number, but there is. If anybody else comes in, then a percentage of that money is paid back to the school district who paid for that original.
There was also so the the residential that's newer down there. Turk was part of the agreement and we made sure at the time that they had X amount of affordable housing and we got some say on architectural in return for water.
That was Farmer's Grove.
Farmer's Grove. Yes, thank you. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do with this, we we do the same thing with this that we did with that.
Yeah. And that's, you know, obviously one of Julia's comments was, you know, you guys need an out of town water service agreement still.
And Laura from Water Department is aware of this as well.
But if we can even have a little bit of say in what, you know, the final product looks like and what you know, that I mean, there's so much stuff there. That road is already such a cluster going into the high school, you know? I'm assuming in any comment we would make to the county, that's got to be part of it is what type of access will they have to the highway and
Safety with inexperienced high school drivers and everything else.
Do they? Does a county require traffic studies?
I don't know what the county does.
Yeah, I think they do.
Oh, it'd be, yeah. From C D.
I mean, it's Highway nine. Yeah, it seems like it wouldn't be their choice.
Yeah.
There was one other that didn't make it into the packet here. This was a few months ago and I haven't heard any update on it. But as you know, there's some mini storage up French Creek County Road four fifty. So right beyond seven eleven, just and then there's liquor stores beyond that. There's some really ancient stuff.
Breckenridge mini storage is
A one auto.
The one. Anyway, I got a referral a few months ago that you know, they're they're looking at scraping some of that and coming back with another, you know, newer building that would consolidate some of that storage. Unfortunately, what I saw was like fifty feet tall. And you know, a lot of bright colors and everything. So made some initial comments on it. I haven't seen anything more on that since then, but.
Doing that, Mark. Who wants to do that, you know?
Now, I can't remember if it's the owner.
Is there a developer involved?
Yeah, I I can't remember. I think it's the owner, but maybe they have some investor coming in.
One point, this is a long, this is a while ago about potentially seeing if at any point they wanted to do a redevelopment of trading them property there for property out on, you know, potentially a cane or airport and, you know, move like commercial down the street and do more housing there. I don't know if you remember those discussions. It was just, it was sort of a we were doing a work session about housing and we talked, it was sort of like one of those pie in the sky. If they ever redevelop, we really should talk to them about doing a land swap. I don't know if that's
Well, there's multiple owners back there.
Yeah. But if multiple owners are doing a, I mean, if they want to do a fifty foot building, maybe it's better somewhere else. And then yeah, we could, we could have a discussion about putting some housing there. That's the, I mean, honestly, that's a perfect place to have housing with, you know,
Yeah.
infrastructure, bus access, sidewalks, etc. So.
Okay. Well, if I see something more on that all.
That traffic study being done for right there.
Scratch around a little bit too, because I own some stuff out there.
Not in that.
Negotiate with you then. That's easy. Just give it to us.
Not in that, not in that complex, but in the the Breck Trade Center. I'm involved in there, but I think you're true talking about us behind that.
Yeah, I think so.
Worth it.
I think the Breck Trade Center group is open a little bit anything. But the the group behind is going to be probably more problematic. There it's chopped up pretty small. There are a lot of owners back there.
Okay.
Thanks for fighting the good fight.
With a lot of this, I mean, we don't have much teeth other than weighing in on a lot of these issues. Is it worth going to the county to revisit the joint upper blue master plans of some of our concerns, ridgeline disturbance envelopes, other issues we can work with the county to codify?
I think it'd be a uphill battle, but I mean, it's going back to the, I don't know if we need to go to the extent of redoing the policies in the joint upper blue plan. It's quite an effort to go through that, but case by case basis, we've definitely been pushing for with them in terms of that they they look at these issues. Yeah. I don't know how else to respond to that, but I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, but to revise the jump would be you know, we we did it once in like fifty, every fifteen years and maybe maybe another one's coming here in the next five years. Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I totally agree with what you just said.
All right.
Right.
Hey, let's get reports of town manager and staff and report of council and other matters out of the way now because we have some time before exec session and shorten the night meeting. Good.
And we can take a little break before exact session. Is that okay?
Sure. Yeah. Let's let's hammer through this stuff real quick and then we can do that.
A couple of things I want to go over with you. We're gonna I sent out an email to everybody to meet at start on the twenty second, an hour early at two P M. We'll meet at the B O C C room. The top floor of the old courthouse. So I want to talk about the Justice Center Housing Project with them and, you know, if there's anything else you want me to bring up or you want to bring up at that meeting, let me know and I'll give them a heads up.
I'd love to hear about Lake Hill, how that's going.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and around the county.
I'm sure we'll have that much time, but we'll see.
Heard that it's progressed more than expected. So that's good news. And also just this might be a longer conversations, but talk about mobile home parks and certain things that have happened recently. State law has changed so that we can be proactive in talking about the mobile home parks that we have and how it might impact workforce.
Well, we also talked in housing today about a known net loss housing policy that might speak to a little bit to what you're talking about as well.
And Shannon and I will both be out of the office on Friday. James will be acting. And I'll be out.
Are you all day, James?
I'll be out next week, next week.
Everybody, James' number.
We gotta stir some stuff up.
The party, James.
All next week you'll be out?
Yeah, I'll be out all next week and Shannon will be.
The new rec.
Yeah, new rec vacation rec.
Use what I get this year, especially when it's cold. I did twenty-one years. That's all. We'll get into reports and that. All right.
We did have a MMC meeting. On Zoom and I don't remember any of it.
Hold on a minute. So I think I have my notes here.
And then the big cast meeting is coming up at the start of March. It's the legislative down in Denver, which is always a great one. We get to hear from all kinds of cool stuff.
And we got an update from Blue River that you may recall C dot was trying to do a chain up station, right? Next to there. Well, they've kind of gotten off that a little bit, but they're still going to have an area for trucks to pull over. But there one, a more collective effort on trying to, when the road does get shut down to not have trucks detoured around through not, which is a problem for all of us, right?
When seventy gets shut down, they don't detour through Breck and go.
You know, trying to change Google Maps and some certainly I seventy doesn't encourage them to do that, but I don't know that they're necessarily discouraging either C dot. So they'd like to see that happen. So we'll, we'll collectively, we'll kind of work and see what, if any inroads we can make into that. There is some discussion amongst the B O C C as the they are the Board of Health. And they are looking at dropping the public health order. In the next, could happen as early as this week or next week, they're working very closely with the childcare centers and the schools is their biggest concern right now. Because some of them want to continue, at least a school for a period of time, they want to continue, especially in the elementary schools where it's the same teacher with those kids all day long with some mask requirements. But they're they're talking through that and Roy, the superintendent was on the meeting with us. So it's not a surprise to anybody, but they think that it's time to start looking at the switch from the pandemic to the endemic and what does that look like? And so that would be the slightly, it seemed very likely that we'll see this in the next week or two coming up. So more to come when that does happen. And then just kind of an update from everybody on what they're seeing with regards to the municipal elections. I think we're seeing, everybody is seeing an increased number of candidates running for local offices. I don't remember, but they're all like six and eight and we're ten and stuff like that. So.
About it. Pretty low impact meeting. Open space, anything to add?
I have nothing to add. I think Anne's presentation was great and we didn't have a meeting.
E T O, Mr. Coon.
Lucy's here. We just had a drawn a blank. Lucy, help me out. What was the word? Planning for the whole year, so three years. And B H A is getting a name change. Oh, we actually have something here.
Oh, cool.
It's going to Breckenridge history.
And it's the colors. It looks so nice.
It's a nice logo. But wanted to let council weigh in on it first. The Breckenridge Heritage Alliance, the B H A, that it's had so many names over the years. They wanted to get something that everybody that came to town could go Breckenridge history. That's where we want to go. Heritage Alliance. What did that mean? So it's your, it's your turn to weigh in on it.
Yeah, it used to be historical society.
Hysterical society.
Which was easy to change.
I'm assuming that's the way it's going to go back and in ten years it'll be historical society. I'm fine with it.
Looks great. It's good. Yeah.
Hope the new name look resonates with most people and exemplifies that we're not just about a mining area. The public launch, the public launch is supposed to happen in May. So thoughts? No one sounds too opposed to it.
Yeah.
I think history is better than heritage. I agree.
Yeah.
That means more.
Great to see the Barney Ford out there with snow sculpture.
Yeah, that was cool.
The um
Great partnership.
See, there was something, it really pushed people towards Barney Ford and being in being the Bunny Ford house and that whole weekend, I think, was just busier because of the snow sculpture.
All I've got. Thanks, Dennis. Breckenridge history. Love to change that on the notes.
See if you can get there right next time.
Creative arts.
We have a we're going to do a kind of a retreat coming up beginning of next month or end of this month to do some planning and some strategic work. We have not had a meeting, I don't think. Do we have meeting records? I don't think so. Yeah. So I look forward to our strategic retreat.
Cool. Events.
Is in the packet.
Excellent. Childcare Advisory Committee.
Well, I just wanted to announce to everyone who doesn't have a child who's four to zero, that the pandemic is not over. It's been a really brutal couple of months for all the childcare facilities. They, we have had so many classes closed, just one after another, after another. So you guys remember that we did grant some funds to be used as relief and those were very much appreciated that we did that specifically because people were paying their full month. You know, for the last several months, even though they were only receiving a portion of that childcare time. So we did want to give a little bit of relief and that was much appreciated, but I think vaccines may start to be available at the end of this month or beginning of March, but that's still, you know, they don't know if the little kids are going to need a third dose and they're only going to be getting their first dose in March. So hopefully any employers who are listening just continue to be super, super understanding about this hardship because it's a hardship in so many ways. And lots of those kids have been exposed so many times now and, you know, unless you're testing all the time, then your kid may have even had it and you don't even know it and they're still on quarantine. And they're not able to do a five day quarantine. So even more depressingly, it's still the full ten day quarantine. Yes.
So when, when the public health order goes away, does the quarantine go away?
So.
And then they're just sick kids that just have to stay home?
No, it was.
I think there'll be rules, but I don't know that it'll be part of a public health order rule anymore.
It'll still be quarantine. I mean, they just had a very long meeting about it yesterday and we tried to brainstorm some other solutions and we asked public health, can we do test to stay, you know, can we do five day quarantine? Can you, can we wait to quarantine the whole class? Classes are getting, the entire class gets shut down from one sick kid or teacher. And so we asked, is there any other strategy? Could we maybe do more of an outbreak strategy where the first kid's sick, they go home. Second kid's sick, they go home. Third kid's sick. Okay, it's clearly community spread. Let's close down the classroom. No. And so it's just.
But if there's no public health order, why does any of that stuff still exist? If this is just gonna, if we're moving into an endemic and this is just going to theoretically move to a seasonal flu, you don't shut down classes for seasonal flu. Kids get the flu, they go home.
Unless it's unless there's like a percentage, right? Like sometimes there's that odd instance.
I don't really follow the logic from public health. If they're going to get rid of the health order, why they would have a separate order for you or does that come from somewhere else?
Maybe it's because it's higher risk. I don't know. I will definitely continue to ask that question because we're looking for a path forward for sure. And we do know that, you know, eventually a vaccine is going to be available. And so there's, you know, there's some hope, but it's still a ways out. But I'll ask that question. I'm more than happy to ask that question. Specifically, they were talking about getting rid of the mask order and I don't know what other facets of the public health order, you know, I don't know where the quarantines and things are housed.
So there wouldn't, with and with the no masks or the non mask order, would that apply to the same group of kids? So that they're, they wouldn't be wearing masks, but yet they would still quarantine if yes, one of them has it.
They still have their own rules in the school.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like it's setting it up to success though, right? Like, because if everything
And I think that's why they haven't done this yet because they're working so closely with all these little things like Kelly's talking about trying to work through whether it's at the school district or at the childcare centers.
Well, and when you talk to Amy Weinland, she says, you don't have to do this, but we would suggest, or this is safest. It's pretty hard to say, well, we're just going to do something different.
When you're responsible for young children.
Right. It's just, I think it's just a really hard situation all around.
Yeah. And the thing with the masking is, I mean, just at the childcare facilities, we've talked about how difficult it is, but then in addition, and so we said, could we just go to the five day quarantine in those classes, that mask?
Right.
And they said, well, because you have nap time and eating time, it's actually not even there. You know, that's not considered a hundred percent successful mask wearing. And so it kind of goes back to like, why are we making them wear masks? And then it's just this vicious cycle. So.
It's just unfortunate that there aren't any tools. There's, it just sounds like there's no tool.
There are no tools.
And there's a big quarantine. It's just hard. Yeah.
And every school has gone through it over and over again. So I just want to make people, you know, employers especially aware of the like parents of young kids are still in March twenty twenty and it's miserable, but hopefully by March twenty twenty-two.
Will be some
will be vaccines will be on the horizon.
All right. Workforce housing.
We had a long, you know, we had a action packed meeting today. We're going to review it in in detail next, next week, next meeting.
And social equity.
We had a couple of positions open. We had ten applicants and a subgroup of us are nominating three people to fill positions. Two immediately and one in April. So we'll have that recommendation later, but a great great group of community members applied. And I think we're seeing some of the work that Shannon and other staff has done and really getting the word out about our commission opening. So hopefully we keep seeing this trend of a lot of great applicants.
That's great.
So we're going to ask you to add that to the night meeting agenda. We didn't put it on as a motion under other matters of motion to appoint a new members for the Social Equity Commission. So is it, do you have any questions relative to the people they interviewed or who they're recommending? You sent a memo, didn't you? Yeah, you guys had a memo showing, yeah.
It was an email today. You can read it at break.
It was a separate.
I missed it too. Who did it come from?
And then yesterday morning or
Do all your emails.
Give them a thirty second overview.
Yeah, Carol, do you want to? Or do you want me to do it?
Yeah, I mean, the people you select.
I'll just forward it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we have, we're nominating Lori Morocco to start in April. She works at C M C, has some really great initiatives that she's done through C M E C and in the community. We have someone else. Andrew, who works at the SMART program with the sheriff's office. And then finally, we have another woman Sylvia who grew up in the area and is a dental assistant, but has a lot of really strong community tries ties.
Excellent. Great. Cool. Awesome.
Eric, let's go back to the B T O because I don't think I did a very good job, but we had a very productive a board retreat last week or the week before Lucy, I forget. But anyhow, to establish, reestablish some goals and look, look to where we wanted to go and focus our energy going forward. So that's a better update than what I gave. Lucy? I was, I was. I apologize. All right. Other matters?
Oh. I know that we know this already, but people walking from F lot, you know, at Gravity House is just like, what can we do about that? Can we, well, one, one, one thing I'd like to know if we could do is have a different system where instead of everyone who walks across can just walk across, like, should we put a light or something so that at least there's some grouping of people and then they can go across?
There is the, the type of light that is there is what was approved by C dot. And they would not allow a like red, yellow, green type light to hold. So what we tried to do in the past was to have the skier help and hold people so that they don't go in groups, but I don't know how much the skier, have they been there lately?
Have, and they also have some staff orders.
Yeah.
And right now that area has become secondary
Yeah.
to us because of the Watson spot that we have to do. So it's suffering this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Radar, on the radar.
That's just picking at an old wound right there.
I know, I know, but it is like it affects everything all the way back to the market.
Maybe somebody will say, I know what the answer is.
Approached the village. We approached the village about doing a, an overpass. And they did, they, they were not very cool about us landing on their deck up there. So we dropped it.
Also, there's some pretty offensive graffiti in the Main Street Station stairwell. I'm not sure who we should contact to take care of painting over that, but it's
Let's just get a hold of property.
Down into their parking down there?
Yeah.
Surprising that they're not taking care of this.
What did it say?
I'll tell you, but I'm not going to tell you. I don't want to give a platform.
Nice. Any other matters? All right. Then let's go into an executive session. Quick break.
Yeah, let's take a take a quick break.
Let's take a break.
Super hydrated. Super hydrated.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that at other. That'll be the last right after the resolution.
I'd like to call the word of the town council regular meeting for the 8th of February 2022. It is 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron. Ms. Owens.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Giello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have the town council minutes for January 25th, 2022. Any changes, comments, corrections? Anyone? No, minute stand as presented. Approval of the agenda, Rick.
Mayor, under new business, other, I'd like to add a motion to appoint the new members for the Social Equity Commission.
The agenda is presented. We go to citizens' comments. These are non-agenda items only with three-minute time limit, please. You'd like to start. Larry, either of you guys here for poll comment? No. We did, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we've chatted this afternoon about having a work session in the next couple of meetings just to talk about the overarching overcrowding, not just about events, but everything that runs the gamut. So the council, you know, obviously, we've all talked about this for years in town and it's just, it's just gotten worse as time goes on. There was sort of a pause during the pandemic, but yeah, we've, we've had a couple conversations about it. And we're going to deal with it in a work session, see if we can get somewhere. So.
That's why we're here.
Great.
Thanks for listening and thank you and seriously.
No, thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the public wish to comment this evening? And welcome to the candidates for council. Thanks for being here. With that, public hearing is closed. We go to Breckenridge Ski Resort update. Jody.
Hi, how's it going, everyone? Good to see you guys. Gosh, been a while since I've seen you before I think we opened for the season. I'm just reaching my seven months as the CO of BRAC. And wow, feel like I've been shot out of a cannon. It's been an exciting season. You know, one of the things I just want to quickly reflect on is how amazing it is to live and work here. Being over in Keystone for the last two years and I drive over Swan Mountain every morning and just I'm amazed at how beautiful it is and just how lucky we really are. And just want to state that on the record that we are probably one of the luckiest communities. And I've lived in some pretty beautiful ones. So, you know, since starting, my focus has really been around just learning and getting to know the community, spending time with Eric and Rick and just really appreciate you guys bringing me in and helping me learn the ropes here. It's been amazing. And as well, same with our staff at BRAC. I've gotten to know the team and just really impressed with that team that John Beuler built. And, and I think we've really forged through. and I think we've really forged through this next phase of the COVID pandemic quite well. So I'm gonna walk you through just a little bit of the experience that I've had over the last several months here since we've opened. You know, we're navigating still COVID and I gotta just really give a ton of gratitude. I'm so grateful and appreciate the staff up there and what they have faced through the season and it hasn't been easy. They're the backbone of this resort and it's just the most important thing I can say tonight is how important what they do at the mountain really is to keep that mountain open. You know, we've received a lot of feedback on our COVID protocols and the staff is the face of that and they face it every single day. Some people really like that we've had strict policies and some people don't. And it's that frontline employee that is facing it every single day. And I know each of you that own your own businesses see it real time. So a couple of things that we have done up at BRAC, we started out the season with a new minimum wage that we talked about a little bit in my last session. And that's $15. In addition to that, over the holiday, we implemented a holiday bonus for our team. And then we've also implemented, starting January 1st, $2 an hour bonus for our hourly employees that will go through April 15th. In addition to that, our full-time salaried employees will get a one-time bonus new this year as well. So I'm pretty impressed with that. You know, we have, we have looked at the conditions in the community and have taken great action around that. Also, I just want to point out that, you know, there has been an increase in Epic Pass sales and adding more crowding to the resort and to the town. The fact is that across our resorts, there have been, have not been more skier visits this season. Skier visits are down this season as compared with last and the seasons prior. Our resorts are popular places. People want to come here, much like I just talked about. It's an amazing place to want to come to and we have taken the approach of being inclusive. Our mountains are meant to welcome everyone. And that's important to our company and it's really important to me that we are very inclusive in what we do every single day. I did want to point out our, our company strategy around advanced commitment to the Epic Pass products and our employees and our communities. You know, it protects us from variable weather conditions, climate change and all types of variables that we're faced with. And I think it's just important that our guests understand that we do limit lift tickets during our peak holidays. So that's an important thing. The other important thing that I want to point out is that while Epic Passes sales, those pass holders have converted from lift ticket buyers. So while there were more passes sold this year, many of those were converted from day ticket purchasers. I do want to be clear, though. All of our mountains should be welcoming and a place for everyone, as I mentioned before. So not only did we open the season with interesting conditions, but we also were hit really hard with the Omicron variant. And, you know, like the rest of the community, it was hit hard at the resort. And we persevered, which I'm really, you know, I go back to the team and how hard the teamwork to keep the mountain open. We did implement some new things, the Epic Mixed Time, which gives immediate updates on our lift line wait times. And we also did change our lift maze layout. So I'm sure you've seen that. We are loading all of our chairs to full capacity at every turn, every lift. We are really focused on maximizing and optimizing our lift experience. I will go into a little bit of our terrain when we first opened. So we opened this season, we had 700 acres of terrain open with just 80 inches of natural snowfall. Coming out of the holiday, we received nearly five feet of new snow and more than doubled the amount of terrain. As many of you know, BRAC's a big mountain, so the new Freedom Chair has made an immense impact on our Peak Seven experience at circulation and flow. We talked about that a little bit going into the season, but we're seeing it real time now. So that was great. We opened the new Freedom Chair on Christmas Eve. And then we opened Peak Six on January 6th, the Imperial Chair on January 9th, and Peak 10 on January 10th. And we did just open the lake chute, so that was opened on January 13th. I know that's important to everybody. It was an impressive terrain openings and now today, I'm very happy to say that we are almost nearly 100% open. We just have one extreme hike to a batch of terrain that's left and it's a little over 100 acres. Yeah, the biggest priority this year has been guest circulation and flow. And I would say I'm really proud that we've been doing a good job at it. We've moved people around. Our, our job is to get people up and out and really leaning into the Five Peaks experience. And so you'll see in our marketing and communications that we're really leaning into the Five Peaks so that people know there's more than just the Colorado and Rocky Chair and Quicksilver, but there's a lot more out there to ski. So another area that we've really focused on is our egress and really signing and managing the exit flow at the end of the day, the egress. And so we've got a lot of signage up on the mountain to really focus on the ski back to the Gondola and the parking garage. And we've had great success with that. We're managing that. We're watching the data and seeing how many people we can actually get out of their cars and fewer buses on the roads up, up to the mountain. And so that is a conscientious effort that we're really trying to take action on is fewer people in cars, fewer buses going up and down and really getting people to ski down to the garage. Let's see, food and beverage has been interesting this year. We do have a vaccination policy in our quick serve on mountain restaurants. As well as we started out the season with our talk reservations at our quick serve restaurants, we have done a pivot and we are taking walk-in first come, first serve as well as reservations now just to manage the flow. We have seen increased people visitation using our outdoor bars and barbecues. Big success, except on those really cold days like we just had. I don't know about you, but it was minus 26 a couple of days ago. So anyway, that's been successful so far. Making that pivot with our food and beverage has been really helpful, taking walk-ins and reservations to manage. And so with that, I would say, you know, there's quite a bit of winter left. We're planning to be open through Memorial Day. And what, what's going to be different a little bit, we will open off, keep all five peaks open through Sunday, April 17th. Then on the 18th, we'll move to our spring operations. We are looking to operate Peak Six, Seven and Eight with base area access leveraging Peak Seven's Independence Chair. And from Peak Eight, we'll have the Rocky Chair open to connect. So that's the plan right now. And that's it. You know, just want to say thank you for the time and appreciate you all.
Thanks, Jody. Any questions?
Yeah, so I think that's great that you're updating your minimum wage and increasing it. What kind of hiring capacity are you at right now? Do you, do you know?
So we're staffed right now. I mean, we're at a, we're at 100% operation and all of our outlets are open. I would say the only modified operation, we did have to pull our blue route, our bus blue route for a period of time. That is now, it came back online on January 26th, I believe. So we're happy that all services are back in function. The Overlook Restaurant is a grab and go this winter and has been all winter, but otherwise we're fully staffed.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of working with Trevor on some things over the last couple of months and he's just been really receptive and great.
Thank you for that. He's, he's one of our leaders and thanks for, for sharing.
Jody, thanks.
Right, thank you.
All right, Breckenridge Tourism, Tourism Office update. Lucy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'd like to start off with thanking Jody and the resort for their support for the Snow Sculpture event. I've owed her a thank you note, so I'm gonna do it right here. The snow is always the best on the global circuit, according to our sculptors. It was just, everything went flawlessly on the build. Sarah LaCoco, who does the PR and marketing, jumped right in and helped us with the reservations messaging to the Epic Pass holders in their email database. Jody was able to put all 18 of their buses on, get drivers for all of them. This is for the Saturday of Snow Sculpture. And I echo Trevor, I got to meet him that weekend as well and Chase get comments. So I mean, they were just absolutely tremendous partners as they always have been with this event. I'd also like to thank Larry and Tim for being here tonight and for writing their very thoughtful and heartfelt letters. We take that very seriously and in fact, just built some of that into our vision statement. I'm gonna do just a very brief overview on the data we have regarding the weekend, but I want to start with reminding everyone the, the reason that we do Snow Sculpture today is for media value and branding. When it was concepted 32 years ago, it was to help fill in January, but clearly January is doing just fine. So this is about getting, you know, we had Access Hollywood here, you know, those are the kind of things. That's the reason behind why, why we do it. So for us, the measure of success is really going to be where we end up on national and international media value for the event. I'll, I think you heard some of this this afternoon, the, the work session, the Zoom cut out kind of in the middle of it there. Had for the traffic counts that I got from Matt Halsey. 2019 was the year when we had that full-on gridlock, when emergency services couldn't go through in the multiple events in the county. That year, the traffic counts for three days over the event was just under 83,000 vehicles. 2020, so we correct, you know, that in 2020, we did get together. Events got spread out, so we weren't on top of Frisco and all that stuff. And then we also met with Parking and Transit in advance of the Snow Sculpture event to see what can we do in terms of signage and things like that to help smooth it out. And while 2020 was really busy, we had just over 96,000 vehicles that year. And it was very, traffic was slow, it was backed up, but I don't think we had the full-on gridlock like we did in that really bad year. This year, we had 93, 627 vehicles go through the counter. So that's down 2.6% from 2020. So I think that, you know, we put a reservation system in place for the first time, which was it was a scary thing for me anyway, but I think it really worked. We had over 14,000 reservations. And they were spread fairly evenly throughout the day, a little more from four to six o'clock, but it was, you know, really very reasonably spread. We surveyed people onsite that day. 75% of the people in the venue knew about reservations, which is astounding for a first-year-out-of-the-blocks effort. One thing I'll say, there were some questions about marketing. The only marketing that we do for the event, again, because we're into branding and media is, you know, that we have the press in the front range because we've had this event for 32 years. They know what's happening. They're gonna tell a story. So this year, the story we asked them to tell was to include reservations on Saturday. Don't need them any other day, come another day. And I think they did a fairly good job with that. And locally, for the first time, we did advertising. That was the how-to. It was the reservations message. We did it in Spanish as well. So I think that has a lot to do with why the 75%, 75% of the people knew about it. 80% of our reservations were from Colorado. This event has always had a strong front-range following. And again, it's not our core strategy because we're out of state. That people know about it, they love it, they come, which is why we don't market because they, they're coming anyway. So now we're moving into just telling them how to visit a little bit better. Most of our folks that we surveyed, 66% were satisfied with the reservations, how it worked. Only 9% were dissatisfied. About 70% of the people who were here, again, onsite for those four days, Friday through Monday, and it's a fairly small sample size. It's okay for four days. So I think it's valid, but I'll say it's valid. About 75% were day visitors and they spread out 62% on, of the visitors on Friday were front-range or day visitors. Saturday, that was down to 58%. Sunday, 75 and Monday, 81. So we did dip that day visitor down on the Saturday. So doesn't mean Saturday still wasn't crazy busy, but we think we kept it from being, you know, a gridlock again. 80% of the people come specifically for the event. We are asking them this year, because we have this database now, 14,000 people that we know were there. We were asking them this year, did you come to ski? Because what we really don't know is, you know, how many people were here anyway? Or did the event come up and then they went skiing or back? They're only in the venue for like 15 or 20 minutes, so they definitely are doing other things. They don't drive up in all that traffic, walk through the site for 20 minutes and go home. So we ask people, this is kind of interesting, we ask people if the number of people they encountered in the event was more or less or about what they expected to see. And we asked this on the street interviews as well. And 41% of the people said less, so they were probably here on a busier Saturday. 45% said it was about the amount they expected and only 14% said it was more than they expected. Surprising. Mostly women, mostly over 55. And the interesting thing with the over 55 group, we know that we get a lot of buses, tour buses or charter buses coming from the front range and assisted living places and things like that. And we anecdotally know that this was the first time the Welcome Center saw no buses dropping off right in front of the Welcome Center there on Main Street. And the, the dispersion of the 55-plus crowd, 62% on the Friday, 70% on the Monday and less than 30% on the weekend. So we think we did. We were successful in moving those folks off of the Saturday tour. So any questions or thoughts on that? And Shannon has a copy of these numbers too. So lodging was, we were in the 90s. On the Saturday, the busy Saturday of Snow Sculpture was 89% occupancy. The next weekend, the 5th of February, we were at 90% and this past Saturday was at 91%. So we're at, you know, for the I mean, Breckenridge is busy and it's not just the one weekend. It's like we're on this string. So for the season, we're running we're, we're about 4, 5% over, well, let me just talk about 20, yeah, about 5% over the 19, 20 season, which is the closest to normal. And our ADRs are up, up 29% from that year. So it's, it's big.
5% is rooms or dollars, Lucy?
5% is rooms. And then the dollars, you know, it's 29%, it's about $100 a night on average. So, yeah, so the season's looking solid. You know, we're, we are not marketing in the winter. You know, we worked around the event, you know, to direct people, the how-to thing. We appreciate the, the volume and the impacts. And, you know, we leaned in heavier this year than we have in the past to see what we could do in advance to help with that. And I think it maybe took the edge off, didn't solve the problem, but I think if we keep working at these things and looking at other things, other dials, we can kind of turn, we can you know, get this thing to where it's comfortable for the community, for more people in the community.
You're saying it's $100 per night over 1920?
And it's 29% more. Yeah. And that's an industry, it's, it's across the industry.
Right, for night, per night on average?
100 more, yeah.
But so that's meaning a total of four, if you're saying it's up 29%, it's about $400.
No, no, it's, it's up 29%. That equals about $100 additional per.
Right, so then you're, but like doing the math or napkin math, right, then a room night is 400, right, about?
Yeah, you'd be surprised at some of the rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we were like, we, because we bought a lot of lodging for the event, really, it's, it's great, it's great for the properties. And then just to, any other questions on any of that part? You know, I just want you to know how seriously we take, like, the whole, you know, building the event, executing the event, and the aftermath, so. And just to kind of follow up on a couple of comments that Dennis started earlier in the work session. We did have our strategic planning session with the board two weeks ago, and I took, we worked through it with the team this morning. And as we talked with all of you in December, when we were in here for our, just our work session, we are, you know, focused summer/fall, only out of state, and we, for the winter, we, we all agreed, the board agreed, and the team, and you all agreed when we said we would look at it. For the winter of twenty-three, we were going to lean in heavier, much heavier on the destination management side. We're feeling like we had some success with this event and reservations, and so we kicked around a lot of ideas today for different things we can do, you know, working closely with town and seeing what we can do to just help, help that experience go better for every, all parties involved. So.
Thanks, Lucy. Any questions?
A lot, but I thought it was important that you.
No, that was great. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, it is Black History Month, so I'm going to read a proclamation. You know how I love proclamations. This is the proclamation for Black History Month, February first through the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the town of Breckenridge honors Black Americans and celebrates the accomplishments of Barney Ford. During this Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements of the Black community and a time for recognizing the role of Black people in our history. And whereas, the month of February since nineteen seventy-six has been designated as a tribute to the hundreds of years of Black innovation and struggle. And whereas Governor Jared Polis has proclaimed Tuesday, February first, as Barney Ford Day, in order to recognize Ford, a prominent businessman in Breckenridge, and whereas Barney Ford was born enslaved two hundred years ago in eighteen twenty-two, escaped at age twenty-six, and wrote to his enslaver, "If I can do better by myself than I can with you, I feel that I am at liberty to do so, for this is common to all free men." And whereas Barney Ford came to Denver in eighteen sixty and was called King of Restaurateurs. And whereas Barney Ford suffered significant business losses due to the Great Denver Fire, bankruptcy and financial ruin, yet remained undeterred in his pursuits. And whereas, Black Americans have played significant roles and made lasting contributions to our town's history and the history of Colorado's development, while working tirelessly to contribute to every aspect of our society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, increasing our awareness of Black history, we hope to be better equipped to handle future challenges and opportunities. And whereas, by the town of Breckenridge's continued recognition of Black History Month, we hope to firmly demonstrate the respect and value we have for our residents of Black heritage. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand twenty-two as Black History Month. Call upon all Breckenridge residents to join me in honoring the many contributions made by Black Americans to our town, state, and nation, and to participate in educational and inspirational events. Hey, thank you. We move on to continued business. We have a couple second readings this evening. The first is the second reading of Council Bill Number One, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance proving a development agreement with Brian Peterson and Daniella O'Grady, Thirty-Seven Sizzler Green. Julia.
Counsel, this ordinance approved on second reading this evening would authorize a development agreement to exempt certain requirements such as density and mass of the development code for construction of a garage and bonus room in the Lincoln Park neighborhood. This agreement would also waive approximately thirty-four thousand dollars in fees and allow an increase in the maximum allowed capital improvements. In exchange, the town would receive the public benefit of an eighty percent AMID restriction on the rent of the bonus room. There are no concerns from the council at first reading, and the only change is of the names of the property owners in the development agreement attached.
Thank you, Julia. Questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Seeing now the public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move that on second reading, we pass Council Bill Number One, an ordinance regarding the development agreement between the Town of Breck and Brian Peterson, Daniella O'Grady, regarding a proposed bonus room at Thirty-Seven Sizzler Green.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? No? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have a second reading of Council Bill Number Four, Series two thousand twenty-two. It's an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter Three of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning camping restrictions. Chief.
Sir, counsel, this is a second reading for a, attached, the attached ordinance passed by council would modify the town code to allow for limited permitted vehicle camping in the town of Breckenridge. For the last couple of years, the Unsheltered in Summit program has been successful in providing temporary housing for local workers. The initial program has been occurring for two years at the Agape Church in unincorporated Summit County. Through stakeholder meetings, an additional need has been identified that would require expanding the footprint to additional locations to include within the town of Breckenridge. The current ordinance prohibits this activity. This change would expand the town manager's authority to issue a permit for camping, changing the wordage from "in connection with a special event" to "for a specified period." And there are no changes from the first reading. Thank you. We'll take any questions.
All right, any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? No, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move that we pass on second reading Council Bill Number Four, a change to the Town of Breck camping ordinance. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Chiello.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a first reading, and I have Council Bill Number Five, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance regulating exterior food and beverage areas.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. If approved at this first reading, this ordinance attempts to put in place regulations for exterior food and beverage service areas into the development code and other sections of town code to address impacts such as employee generation, lighting, increased water use, and parking needs. As such, these have been, staff's approach has been to address these at fifty percent of the indoor use that is similar to the exterior dining. This ordinance would insert a definition and review process for exterior food and beverage areas. It would modify Policy Twenty-Four, A Social Community, to add a employee generation rate for exterior food and beverage areas over two hundred square feet. Create a new policy fifty-two in the development code, which will be where the exterior food and beverage regulations will be. It will also insert parking requirements and water plant investment fees for exterior food and beverage use as well. Then there are also modifications to the lighting chapter, which include bistro and decorative lighting code changes to further define soft or warm LED bulbs as under twenty-eight hundred Kelvin. Bistro lights would also be required to be downcast, set height limits of fifteen feet above grade or eight feet above a rooftop deck. Also, this would set perimeters of what would be allowed for a rooftop deck bistro lighting situation, so that they're screened on two sides. And there would be a setback required of at least five feet for the bistro lights to be added on a rooftop. The bistro lights would need to be turned off by ten PM or a half an hour after the close of business, whichever is later. And lastly, there's a new provision here to allow for the provision of LED light strips to be also a twenty-eight hundred Kelvin maximum to hide the light source and to be a maximum of a four-foot in height in a wattage of one point five watts per square foot. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Julia. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move that the council approve on first reading Council Bill Number Five, Series two thousand twenty-two, the title of which was previously read into the record.
Further discussion by the council? Roll call.
Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Chiello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a first reading Council Bill Number Six, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property to the Colorado Department of Transportation.
Good evening, counsel. I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property to the Colorado Department of Transportation. This ordinance is to convey six parcels owned by Vail Resorts to CDOT, totaling one point two five acres, and then two parcels owned by the Town of Breckenridge totaling point four or five acres. The conveyance of this property is required for the construction of the Watson Ave Roundabout at the intersection of Park Ave and Watson. The conveyance of the parcels is required as a condition of the CDOT access permit. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? The public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move that the council approve on first reading Council Bill Number Six, Series two thousand twenty-two, the title of which was previously read into the record.
Becken.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Chiello.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have a resolution Number Four, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is a resolution authorizing the execution and recording of a density sunset covenant for the Alta Verdi One Workforce Housing Project and the Block Eleven Net Zero Apartments. Mark.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution will authorize Rick Coleman, Town Manager, to sign off on a density sunset covenant, which will re- remove density from the Ice Arena Lot Rodeo Ground subdivision. And it will remove about sixty-two, sixty-three point zero-two single-family equivalents of density from that property. And that density is essentially to make up for the density that is being developed at Alta Verdi One and the Block Eleven Net Zero Apartments. This is all pursuant to the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan policies in there that require the town to sunset density to account for the density created by affordable housing projects. And we've also put that in our development code as well.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? No, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move that council approve Resolution Number Four, Series two thousand twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the execution and recording of a density sunset covenant for the Alta Verdi One Workforce Housing Project in the Block Eleven Net Zero Apartments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Chiello. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Tell Jeffrey we didn't need him.
We did need him.
All right, we have one bit of other business, and that is, uh, Social Equity Committee members. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that we affirm the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission's selection committees' recommendation by appointing the following individuals to the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission for a term of three years each. Sylvia Vaikuna, Andrew Brotman, beginning in February two thousand twenty-two, and Lori Morocco, beginning in April two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Chiello.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Mayor, Rick.
Would you also put on record that the council will delay any decisions relative to the matter of discussion in the executive session?
Yes. So, with the matter that we discussed in executive session, we've asked for additional info and a final map, and we'll take action on this item on the twenty-second of February. Good enough? All right. Okay, with that, we go to Planning Commission decisions, Planning Commission decisions for the first of February. Are there any call-ups this evening? Sure. Planning Commission decisions stand as presented. Now, we have the Colorado Mountain College Edition Public Hearing. Chris.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have the Colorado Mountain College Nursing and EMS Edition. And this is a public hearing as required by the MOU that was assigned between the Town of Breckenridge and Colorado Mountain College in two thousand seven as a condition of the town's generous donation of land for this campus. The proposal is to provide a sixty-eight hundred square foot addition to the existing thirty-three thousand square foot main building on the campus. Identifying the screen here shows the site plus the proposed addition, which will attach to the southeast facade of the existing building. If we can move to slide number three. The proposed addition matches the existing materials of the building, featuring red brick, metal accent panels, and natural stone-based sections. It also has composite shingles that match the existing roofing. And the overall height is at, at its tallest point is twenty-nine feet, which is below the recommended thirty-five feet. Per the MOU, and the council will hold this public hearing and will make a decision on this application in a non-quasi judicial form. So, therefore, it does not need to pass a point analysis and does not set any precedent for any future projects that would be, would be reviewed by the Planning Commission or the council. With that, we, we, I'll keep this brief tonight. We provided a detailed staff report along with the full set of plans and the MOU in the packet, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Any questions for the applicant? Sitting in the back trying to stay quiet, out of sight, he's learned.
I'd just like to make a comment as opposed to a question, and Dave, excited to see that you're adding this and adding more capacity for training nurses and EMT. I think that's very important with some of the shortages in our community with these staff, so, thanks for thinking of that.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there a question or just saying hi?
I was saying hi to Dave. Behind Chris.
Is there anyone in the public wish to comment on the final hearing for this addition to the CMC?
Yeah. Just say thank you for your support, and we are looking forward to serving the community and training our future health providers in our search and rescue.
I think it's wonderful, Dave. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, with, yeah. You get up, you have to come up and speak into the microphone, state your name for the record. It's a lot of rigmarole.
Yeah. Okay.
Mike Zobi and I just echo what Dick said about that I think this is a really great thing that they're doing here, and CMC is a great resource to the community, so just add that little bit of support from the public gallery.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment this evening? With that, the public hearing is closed, is there a motion? And there is a motion on the front page of the packet information.
Go ahead, Kelly. Am I going? Go ahead, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the Colorado Mountain College Nursing and EMS Edition PL I make a motion to approve the Colorado Mountain College Nursing and EMS Edition PL two thousand twenty-two zero zero one four, located at one oh seven Dennison Plaza Road with the attached findings. Second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have covered the report of town manager and staff in our earlier meeting, as well as the report of the mayor and council. Are there any other matters this evening?
I just want to say thank you to staff for the extra steps that are being taken to find committee members. And as evidenced with social equity, having a few more people, and hopefully that continues. And I just, I think it's really great, and thank you for the extra efforts.
All right, anything else? With that, thank you.